So good afternoon, everyone. Call to order the Sardic City Council Workshop for March fourth, twenty twenty one. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Dean? Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stanton? Truster?
Here.
Beckett?
Here. Lauren Stanton is excused with prior notice. She did indicate that she's out of town and couldn't not make the meeting this afternoon. Moving on, Ryan, is there anything additional to the agenda?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you. This portion of the meeting is for comment by the public on any agenda items that are shown on our this afternoon's agenda. If you're interested in addressing the council, please ask to be recognized, identify yourself or your name in in community of residence, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Paul Hula would like to make a comment?
Here, go ahead, Mr. Hula.
Hi, my name is Paul Hula. I'm commenting on the manager's report. Two things. First of all, the defense, I want everybody to know that we we actually in good faith and thought that we had an agreement with the city that we executed publicly. However, certainly want everybody to know through the city council that I want to work with the city on this fence and try to see if we can work out something amicably on that together. I do want to mention again that there's a real need and for having that to separate the the docks from from the chain ferry because there's just so much traffic going back and forth there. But again, obviously, we didn't know that there was an issue because we we followed the path that was set forth in the agreement. But, you know, now there's a change of heart. Certainly will work with the city. Also want to comment on the houseboat ordinance. This is something that is of concern and interest to me and hope that we can work with city council on that as well. Because I believe that if done right, this can be a real asset to the city. And and would like to also make sure that there is a distinguishing between the downtown side, so to speak, as well as the side that I am on, because certainly, obviously, there's not the same streetscape concerns or 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 other concerns related to to the other sides, particularly with height and and views, because Park Street is so much higher than than downtown. And and so I'm hoping that that can also be resolved. I sent a little bit of fact and an email to the city manager and and hope that we can work on that together. And then in the the last comment, I got fifty nine seconds regarding the bathroom, you know, one of the, this is a dock minimum now, so it's an individual docks owned by individual people, so I'm kind of minimum only with docks. And one of the people suggested to maybe put a, you know, one of those fancy party parties down so they would have a bathroom and park that kind of like as a trailer there. Obviously, I thought that was a terrible idea. But again, we're just trying to get some way to get some facilities for these dock mediums over there for people to be able to use. I hope at some point I can work with the zoning administration and the CBA for them. Again, you know, it's probably a ways down the road. I saw that as a nonstarter in the agreement, so I want to be be careful. For for listening. And again, I want to reiterate that, you know, I want to be a good neighbor, work with the city and have something that is pleasing and applicable to everybody.
All right, thank you for comments, sir. Anyone else like to address the council this afternoon?
Herman. I'm a counsel for Mr. Hulley on the Dune Ridge Project, and I'd like to address the floating housing ordinance that's part of the manager's report. Like to touch upon both the process and the substance of the ordinance that's being drafted, apparently from the report that we all received that there's a lengthy draft that's in place. Now that that's the case, I'd urge that the council decide to finish the the ordinance in as great a transparency as possible. Like the review and and any revisions to that ordinance, we've done it at public meetings and allow stakeholders to make comment upon the draft before it goes to a public hearing that's going to be required for the final ordinance. There's just a lot at stake here, as Mr. Hulley indicated. And it also request that it be done as quickly as possible. We're only a couple of months away from when some of these structures that are probably going to be covered by the ordinance would be going into the water. I'd also like to echo and build on the comments Mr. Hulley made about the substance of the ordinance that's being drafted. There were findings of fact in your moratorium ordinance, and they're not universally true. I'd urge the either the work group or the entire council, whoever is going to be putting the final touches on this ordinance, to keep in mind the locations, the design and the uses that these structures can be put. Let me give you some examples. There's a finding in your moratorium ordinance that these structures can impact navigation in a negative way. That's not universally true. You need to look at the length of the docks that are already in place. The lengths of the structures that are designed to go into the space, the slips, whether there are wharfs or seawalls. And in a lot of cases, there's not going to be any impact on navigation. Another example is in finding one B that there's could be a negative effect on the aesthetics of the waterfront area, views of tourists and homeowners and tourism. Again, that's not universally true. When you look at, as Mr. Hulley said, the relative distance between private homes and public roads and walkways versus the water level and the relative heights of a proposed structure, there could be absolutely no impact on views. And then another example, finding one E, that there could be unhealthy situations with these structures, well, not if it's designed properly. So I urge you to look at what's been proposed by Mr. Hulley already and make sure that those structures are allowed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Anyone else out there, please? Dan Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try and be brief. The, I wanted to address two items on the agenda, five A, a part of the city manager's report, and then just a bit on five, I think it's five E. On the manager's report, as it relates to the social district, some of you may have seen, maybe all of you have seen, a letter to the editor I wrote and Scott Sullivan published this week in the Commercial Record. In that letter, I did not express opposition, and indeed, I'm not opposed to the social district. What I did caution was the pace at which this is moving. You know, we had surveys and public meetings and what have you for a host of things, including trash recycling and the trail and marijuana, what have you. And nothing of that ilk, besides, I guess, one city council meeting for something that's going to change potentially the character of the town. I realize you talk about it as a trial sort of deal, but we'll see how much of a trial it is, and it seems like going in full force. I think in 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 that regard, Brett Enstfield's letter with the caution in it that the the police have no experience with running one of these is a perfect indication of the kind of reason caution is advised. And similarly, the notion that this is somehow going to save all the bars and restaurants in in the city kind of flies in the face of the fact that only five of these bars apparently are even interested in in doing this, which I can understand because there's costs involved and so forth. Anyway, again, I'd my recommendation is for a slower pace of adoption or moving to adopt. As it relates to the second item, the five E item, just a small sort of administrative note, that item includes resolution, the full resolution two oh three eleven B enacted about a year ago. In that, and this concerns the selection procedure for people on boards and commissions. Anyway, in that long list of boards and commissions in that resolution, one of them, the Fire Department or Fire District Board of Appeals is listed, and the fact is the city does not make appointments to that board. That's the province of the fire board. And it's not reviewed by the jurisdictions necessarily, not certainly required. So I don't know if you want to change the resolution or flag it or whatever, but there you go. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, Dan. I see Lou wanted to address council, please? I believe you're muted, Lou. Can't hear you.
There we go.
All righty, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'll be very brief. I understood that you were going to discuss the library board today, and I put my name into that. That's this is really the volunteer opportunity that I was looking to do two years ago when I first went down to City Hall to say I enjoy volunteering in some capacity. So for those of you on the city council that don't know me, this is this is my face. And my phone number, if you'd like to call, is eight four three three zero one two eight zero three. I think I'd enjoy being on that board very much. And just, you know, look forward to deserving if you choose me. That's that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Is anyone else here? Aaron?
I do not.
Okay, we'll give a last call on public comment. If none, we'll move on to our discussion items this afternoon. Ryan, any further comments on your manager's report? Ryan, you out there?
You're muted.
There you go. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first comment is, if you like the appearance of the the manager's report, we can thank Aaron Wilkinson, who really jazzed this up and helped me with the font and the layout. So the only thing I'd like to highlight in in this report, which is pages two through nine of your packet, is the the floating homes. And, you know, in this update, I talk about potentially establishing a working group. In talking with the attorney, he doesn't think that's probably the best idea for a few different reasons, which which I don't really need to go into. If if we're looking at creating a zoning ordinance, it will probably take us to about May tenth, considering that there'll be about five meetings, including the public, the public hearing. So moving forward on this, I think the best way to to handle it is that if the council members have thoughts or ideas, as you talk to your your stakeholders and community members about this, to send those directly to staff, staff will work up the the ordinance that that we've already started, and we'll bring that back to council. So are there any any questions on that particular item? Okay, hearing none. Again, the pack or the the reports in your packet, happy to address any questions that you have on the report.
All right, I'll make one comment. And in in discussing things with Ryan, in an attempt to keep the council and the public more up to date on on particular items that are being worked on by Ryan and his staff. This type of document is report is is what's resulted in that. Again, it's really more than the opportunity for him to give us updates. Obviously, if it's something that needs more discussion, it would have been placed under the agenda items. Likewise, the same at future council meetings. So I'd just like to to make that that comment regarding that. Council have any other questions on the report? Okay, we'll move on to item B, radar speed signs. As Ryan mentioned, this is something that I suggested to him. This was a few weeks ago. It's evident that we're not going to make any changes to to Park Street. South Park from Perryman to Campbell Road. Based on what discussions we had a year ago in anticipating that we're going to have additional requests to do some more speed controls. I requested or suggested that maybe he get some ideas on additional signage for not only Park Street, but maybe a few other streets in the city. So that's kind of the background on that. So Ryan, you want to pick it up from there, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So we did look into the the cost for the radar feedback signs and the units that you currently have, which are solar powered and more permanent in their placement. Those run about twenty four hundred dollars per unit. There's a shipping charge as well. I should mention also, there's a long lead time. That's why this is hitting your agenda so early in the in the year. The other unit, which is similar to the one or exactly like the one that Douglas has, which is more portable and is not solar powered, that unit's thirty three hundred dollars. And so it's really up to council, how many how many you think you want. You know, I should also mention this is this is not a budgeted item, so at some point in the future, though, it will require a budget adjustment. It's probably going to be some other things that aren't budgeted that the city moves forward with, so we can handle those as a as a grouping at a later date. And one other concern, because I have some experience with these these radar signs and and in my career, is that we should just put some basic parameters on where these are placed. Because when people see them go up, they think they're a really good thing to have on their particular street. And so the parameters could be as simple as these only go on collector roads, and we work with the Sheriff's Department on their exact placement. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Council comment?
Mayor?
Yes, Garnet.
I have two questions. So how many do we have right now? Do you know? How many did we have?
I believe we have two.
On Park Street?
Oh, yeah. Peter's putting up three fingers.
I know we have one on Old Aligan up there on the hill.
Yeah, and I think two on Park Street.
Two on Park Street.
Scott, is that correct?
Yep, there's two on Park Street, one going northbound, one southbound, and then one on Aligan Street.
Okay, and the thoughts are, how many more do we think we need?
Well, that's kind of up to council. You know, I just wanted to be prepared, no anticipating, you know, you know, some issues on our road due to signs, some of the feedback we've been getting the last couple of years. I myself like the idea of a couple of portable signs because that way they're portable, so you can 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 move move them around. And the portable signs are not in need of direct sunlight. So if you're in an area like if you decide to put one because there's issues, hey, on Old Beach Road. You know, you could put one there because you don't need the the sun to to power it. So you know, I I don't know what the right number is. I've got my own ideas where maybe where they should go, or maybe at least maybe on Park Street, one of them should be relocated closer down to the Sardic Yacht Club area, probably. Catching the flow of traffic coming down the Ferry Street Hill, but headed north. So I guess that's what it's that's what we're here for discussion. I don't think it hurts to get a you know, couple of each or one of each. You can always order more. Scott?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Can I put Lieutenant Enstfield on the spot and ask his recommendation based on on what his officers have seen over the past year or so, how many more might be useful, some of the areas we should consider targeting and the different seasons we should be, you know, deploying them in terms of locations?
Yeah, no, not a big deal. Um, definitely probably wouldn't be feasible to have one up on the, you know, by the southern near up on the north side of town there. I mean, obviously, they're good deterrent, you know, for people coming into town. It's, you know, usually a trouble area for us and probably all the streets in town, that's probably one of the ones that have the highest speeds that we don't have a sign. The ones with the solar panels, I mean, those are actually, they do have have a battery pack in them, but they're just, you know, they're so large and cumbersome, they're hard to move around. So the smaller ones are, you know, pretty ideal for bouncing around and stuff if we needed to move around. So you know, maybe maybe two more. It would would be nice to be able to put them around and stuff. And you know, what's what's nice too would be that, you know, if we moved those around that we could target the areas and then, you know, they put put it out on social media that we put it out there, and then, you know, after we, you know, remove them, you know, and do enforcement out there, we let people know that, hey, we're going to start doing enforcement in that area now, too. So out in the county, it's worked as a good deterrent for us.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Other council members? Holly?
Mayor, I agree with you. I would like to see one more sign on Park Street, maybe two that are based on lieutenant's feedback, maybe two that are not solar powered and portable, might be a good idea.
Okay. I always at least from my driving experience, coming around Blue Star Highway, hitting going from the township at fifty miles an hour to the city limits at thirty five, I always thought that'd be a nice little reminder right in there by by Maple Street, and I think that would also help a lot of our visitors and people going to school in the morning and things like that. I think that that's kind of might be a an area for more of a a a permanent one there, but so you just want to let anybody else? Have anything more, you know, to add?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
Uh, I agree with another two on Park Street. I think that's definite. Because they're such a long distance, and then you've got them one going one way and one going the other way. So they're only for that area right there. So I think definitely two more on on Park Street. I think Aligan worked really well. I think the placement maybe needs to be just a little bit changed, especially with the the kids going to school. I think it's a little too quick as you come on to Aligan, and then they just see the sign, they stop, and then got the whole rest of the street not picking on the kids. Lots of times I do it. And then I also think Lieutenant Enstfield's idea of Holland. So I would recommend three. Whether they're solar powered or not, we can determine that, but I definitely think three would be my idea.
I would think three at a probably at a minimum.
Yeah.
I don't think we need any more than that, three or four, but.
Yeah, I I can support that, Mayor, and, you know, I think that Lieutenant Enstfield's idea about Holland Street is a good one. You know, quite often, there's conflicts because people are riding cycles on the sidewalk because they're scared of the pace which traffic is moving on Holland, going down the hill on the way into town. So I think something along Holland is a good idea.
Well, when you drive around town, you can see areas where the police are parked, you know, with their radar themselves checking the traffic. Those are probably good locations or that general area to place these things. Not to take away from police activities, but they probably have sometimes better things to do than just sitting there, you know, checking on the speeders. So I guess Ryan, run with it, huh? Maybe a couple of each? Start with?
Yeah, I collected enough information today to be dangerous with providing.
Okay, all right. Thanks a lot. No further comment on that. We'll move on to item C, the mutual aid agreement. Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mutual aid agreement was was being worked on before I arrived in Sagatuck. The idea here is to to share resources specifically with the Department of Public Works. And so I think Scott Herbert, he's on the call. He could he can certainly chime in on on this one. But, you know, I reviewed the agreement. It seems to make sense. This is a lot of work has gone into this with Rich LaBombarde from from Douglas, and it's 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 up here for your consideration. Also, one other note, I did send this to legal counsel. Apparently, they had not seen it. So they're going to be putting their eyes on it, and I don't know if they're going to, you know, possibly if you want to take action on Monday night, it's highly unlikely that legal will have reviewed this by then, but you could certainly take action contingent upon staff and attorney review and approval.
Yeah. Scott, would you like to comment on this, please?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is one of those agreements that probably wouldn't be acted upon very often, but we did get into a situation this year with the Public Works Department in Sagatuck with with some COVID infections. So that was during a peak time when we had leaf piles out and the snow was was right at right upon us. So if we hadn't gotten those leaf piles up, we potentially would have plowed them back into people's yards and had a real mess for the duration of winter. So we were lucky and the Public Works has and always has since I've been here, a good working relationship with the surrounding municipalities, and we've oftentimes helped each other in little ways, but this just solidifies that plan and this and breaks it down a little further as far as who would be responsible for what. No matter what, whether it's Douglas or Sagatuck, we hold our own community as the highest priority. We may be able to shift around some priorities occasionally. If, for example, if if we had to have some of our street less traveled streets plowed before, or I'm sorry, after Douglas's primary streets, that might be a sacrifice we could we could make unusual circumstance. So we love the agreement and we hope that it gets approved.
Okay, thanks. Council comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
Scott, thank you for that. Do you have any situations that have arisen that we would have had to have this mutual aid agreement in place to to do the work?
Yes, this was the first year that we've ever had to. We had, like I said, it was that same situation with the leaf piles with winter right around the corner. We had a couple of employees out with COVID infections, and we didn't have enough dump trucks to drive all the leaves out of town at the time. So luckily, this year, without a formal agreement, Calmousie Lakes Water Authority was kind enough to lend us one of their employees for three full days. And we also had to utilize a local landscaping company. Not many local landscaping companies are equipped to do the kind of commercial leaf collection like on a citywide scale, but we were lucky to have one. It's Scott's Landscaping Management out of Aligan, and he was he was prepared to help us out. So we skived by this year, and I can't imagine too many circumstances where we'd have to use it, but that, like I said, this was the first year that we ever had that.
And and just for clarification, then, what what did what was Douglas's part in that time? What what did they provide for service?
For to help the city of Sagatuck?
The mutual aid agreement between Douglas and Sagatuck. So when we were short staffed, did Douglas come in and help, or was it mostly Cal Lake and?
It it was Cal Lake at that time. They they had their own leaf piles, and that that's a big thing. Part of it, too, is that just because if Douglas gets into a pinch or if Sagatuck gets into a pinch, you know, we have a very small amount of resources for compared to the responsibilities that we have. We may not be able to supply that mutual aid, but at least we're able to request it and kind of light the beacon and see if anyone can come help us out.
Very good. Thank you so much for that cooperation with our our other entities.
Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes, Garnet.
So a question for Ryan as far as timing, then. Uh, so, uh, a question for Ryan, as far as timing, then you said legal has not yet reviewed it. Is this, um, something that they can get done before Monday or you doubt that they can get done before Monday?
Jeff was out of office this week, so he'll be, he'll be returning on Monday and he's probably gonna be slammed. One of the options that I, uh, laid out was that council could approve this if they're okay with, uh, the parameters and if legal reviews it. And they're okay with it, um, then it, then it can move forward, so the, the action on Monday night could be that council approves. Contingent upon legal and staff review and, uh, that way your work is done, it doesn't need to return to, to council. Unless there's significant concerns that are raised by legal, then, then at that point it would return to council.
Okay, and then a second question for, for both you and Scott then, I, I'm assuming this is very similar to any type of a mutual agreed. We, agreement we'd have, say for example with fire departments, which is generally, or police, right?
Um, I'll, I'll respond to that. It, it would be, yes, and, um. In fact, I think there, there may be opportunities to pull in more organizations into mutual aid, uh, but we thought this was a very good for, good start.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any other council comment? Yes, Holly?
I would just say I'm happy to see it. Thanks, Scott. Um, it just seems like a common sense, uh, proposal. And I'm glad that we worked it out.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, Ken?
Uh, yeah, I do think this is a great thing to do and, uh, I think Ryan suggested the approach where we approve it. Uh, contingent on the legal review is, is appropriate, probably quickest way to get this done.
Okay, alright, yeah, I think the genesis of this is, uh, when the, the issue happened last fall. Uh, when we had the COVID people out and Karen, uh, Holman was here, uh, saw, saw the issue. And I think that started discussions with, uh, the Douglas manager to, to formalize, basically formalize an agreement. And, uh, and so what we've got, and that's how we got primarily here. Being the old guy, I, I, I do remember a time when, that's back when Douglas only had one plow truck, I don't know if this might even be before Scott started working with the city. But that plow truck and Douglas's broke down and Sagatuck plowed Douglas's roads for about two weeks, so it, it, it does happen, so. That being said, any other further comments or questions on this? Okay. Moving on to, uh. Oval Beach fee increase and other Oval Beach, uh, topics, Ryan?
Thank you. Uh, we have a recommendation from your, from your treasurer to look at, uh, the potential of increasing the fee. Uh, for the non-resident season pass at Oval Beach. Uh, some of the highlights include the fact that the fee has not been increased since two thousand and fifteen. Uh, so if you average that out to two thousand and twenty-one, this would represent a, uh, three point three percent increase. Year over year, um, and the other thing that Peter had pointed out to me was that Oval Beach. Really is the revenue source that deficit funds all other maintenance and operations of all of your parks. And your parks, um, although I did not experience it directly, but listening to Scott had received a, a high amount of, of Scott Herbert. A high amount of, of wear and tear and, and use, uh, so I just wanted to point that out as well. Open it up for council discussion and, and Mister Mayor, I know that you wanted to have a, a more broad discussion on the happenings of, of Oval Beach and. That's why, uh, one of the reasons that Scott Herbert has joined us this, this afternoon.
Right, right, so let's, let's zero in on the, uh, comments regarding the, the, the fee increase. Council, chime in please.
Mayor, this is Garn.
Garnet.
Yeah, I, I certainly support this increase, it's been, you know, what is that now, seven, six years? So, uh, we're certainly due for an increase and, uh, anything we can do to help bolster up our funds. To take care of the parks, I appreciate and support.
Agreed.
Other comments, Holly?
Agreed, I just agree with what Garn said.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would support as well, Mayor.
Right.
Yeah, likewise.
Okay, over the years, the city has resisted, uh. Adding a, uh, a charge per attendant, like an entry fee per tenant. For either the number of people in a vehicle or people riding bicycles, uh, or coming in by the inner urban. We resisted that and, but still trying to, uh, I think, uh. Depend on the user fee base, the user pay basis, uh, the parking fee always seemed to be our, our best. Revenue source. Peter, just to clarify, and I think I'm reading this correctly, that the. The person who has one property tax bill can get one. Pass at twenty dollars, that will not change.
That's correct, that will not change, it's every, so if you have multi, for every real, real property tax bill, you're allowed to have a. Discounted pass for twenty bucks.
Okay, however, if you want an additional pass, it's gonna cost you.
Six.
Either the fifty or the sixty if we do the increase.
Correct.
Okay, so I think that's, I think that's important for, for council to, uh, for us to be. To understand because I think we may get a little bit of, uh, question on, on that second, on that second, uh, pass that. That does come up on, on occasion. Uh, any other comments relating to the, the fees?
Sorry, uh, Chris was asking correctly first, so go for it, Chris.
Okay.
Uh, this is just a point of clarification, um, it's my understanding and I could be wrong on this, but if you have that pass in your car. What are you charged at the public parking down by the Sagatuck Center for the Arts? Does that work there too?
No.
Yes, if you, okay, so for the residential twenty dollar passes, there's a P on it that circled, so in the high schools. Organizations are collecting on those pointed out days during the season, you can park there, no charge if there's parking available.
Thank you.
And that's not, but that's only on the residential twenty dollar passes, that's not on the sixty dollar passes or the fifty dollar passes, the non, non-residential.
Right, thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Garnet.
So, so Peter, do you happen to know offhand how many times it has occurred where a household? Would buy more than one pass, they'd get their twenty dollar pass and then they'd get another additional sixty or fifty before this time?
I don't know, we only track the residential ones, they're not, you know, and I know it does happen, people, you know, some people, but. Some people make some off the wall, off the cuff comments about it, but other, you know, we try to encourage people, well, just know what vehicle you're going to use. Cause that pass is not transferable from vehicle to vehicle, so I guess if you have multiple cars, put it, make sure you have it, your beach going car, so. That's what we try to, but some people do, they'll just, they'll pay the extra fee and, or they know friend, there are some people in town that have multiple parcels or multiple homes here. And they'll buy their, their whole allotment up and then, I don't know if they give them to them or they sell them on the black market or how they handle it, but there are people that. That have multiple homes here or multiple pa, properties and they do, and it does qualify for real property if you own a dock here, so. They're allowed to get that twenty dollar residential pass for your dock, it just, cause that's considered real property. And it does, but I have no idea how many people out there buy a, a second one and there's people in the township to buy multiple passes for multiple vehicles that they have. Or kids or whatever.
Peter, you hit it right on the, the nail, head of the nail there, uh, if you've got kids in your house, they like going to beach, you're gonna be buying the extra passes, uh.
Yeah.
I did that for quite a few years.
And, but we don't charge people on bicycles or if you walk in or if you just drop your kids off and you just turn around at, at the shack. At, at the gate there, you know, it's, it's basically, it's a fee to park is what you're paying, what your, the park pass is for.
Scott, did you?
I just briefly, this may be for another time, but, um, is there any thought, I, I know the concession wasn't open due to the pandemic, uh, last year. Is there any thought to, um, other revenue streams in Oval Beach, I'm thinking merchandising, you know, city branded hoodies, t-shirts, stickers. Things of that nature, any thought of that?
Well, I think Peter's gonna have a nice report prepared for us on that.
Great.
As part of our extended discussion on the Oval Beach, uh, so if there's no other questions regarding the fee, well, that'll be up at, for a vote. On Monday's evenings, uh, meeting, uh, so I guess I'll maybe let Scott sit in, you know, make comments first about. Uh, I thought it'd be helpful for council to get it, uh, an idea of what he needs to do to prepare the beach, where he is at at this time. Maybe his timeframe relative to beach preparation, et cetera, so, uh, Scott, do you mind sharing some things with us?
Fair, no problem, Mister Mayor. Um, yeah, there, there's quite a bit that goes into it, a lot of it, right now we're, we're in early March, so we've got. You know, a few months before we're open and have to be operational, so March, you know, with Michigan weather, um, that's the big factor is weather. If that, if winter is over, then we can get a good jumpstart with a lot of this stuff and we understand that there's a need to be outside. And if the weather cooperates, well, we'll get, we'll, we'll be able to start some of these bigger tasks much sooner. But we have to act from a public work standpoint, at least we have to act as if March is still winter time, so. Depending on the weather trend, maybe Merle, uh, early April, we're gonna have to get a new Oval Beach manager this year, so we currently have a job. Job advertisement out until March nineteenth, I believe it is, to try to fill that position and that person's gonna be pretty busy. Working directly with myself and the previous Oval Beach manager, Linda Boltman. You know, we were spoiled with Linda in the past, we could wind her up, get her set up and, and she just took care of a lot of that stuff, so it's gonna be a lot of learning. On my end, without Linda being there, she'll still be involved with that training process. Um, and I was kind of going over what, what the training is gonna look like for this new manager. And it goes into, there's, there's a lot of details, so. April, we'll get that person started, we can start looking at ordering day passes and season passes and, um, inventory for the concessions. And then come March, we're gonna hit it pretty heavy, the Public Works is what I'm more familiar with, so we do more of the. You know, remove the, the erosion control fence, replenish the beach with sand from, that's been blown in. Under the parking lot and, um, also we have a bulldozer contracted in every year to. Once the ble, the beach is replenished with sand, they'll, they'll do that initial bulldozing. And then after that, we have to start raking the beach from all the debris that's washed up over the winter time and that, that's quite a process, removing logs. Anything big with the backhoe that the beach rake can't pick up, we have to get that with other equipment, so, uh, after that we. Well, like right now for March, we're already prepping for it, the, the boardwalk that was out there last year is in pretty rough shape, there's a lot of rotten wood, screws backing out of it. So we're using some of this good weather time right now, uh, we're not planning to rebuild some of those sections of boardwalk. Those types of behind the scene things that are happening already, so, um, but yeah, come, come May, then we're hitting it pretty hard. With the final details of, of everything to get the concession stand up and running. You know, yes, last year we didn't have a, a large menu because of COVID, so we did kind of short, um, prepackaged items. So it was reduced, but, um, you know, this year we have to turn, there's, there's a well of the Oval Beach. Um, so we have to turn the, the well on, we have to get a couple of, uh, consecutive clean water samples. Back to know that the water's safe, we need to get, um, some contractors in there, ProTemp takes care of our, the freezers and the ice cream machines. And the concession stand, uh, ElectraFreeze takes care of the ice cream machines and the slushy machines. And Coca-Cola sets up the, the fountain drinks, so we have to have products ahead of time from Garden Food Service before. Before they can get in there and service those machines, so, um. Mister Mayor, I'm jumping all over the place, there's a lot that needs to be, needs to happen out there, so if there's any specific questions that you wanna know about?
I just think it was helpful just to get an idea of, of, you know, what, what you're, you know, what you're facing opening. The, the beach, uh, I think one of the first things that everybody starts asking is wanting to open the restrooms. And I think you kind of touched base on that when you're able to get the well up functioning and get the, you know, pass your test with the health department on that.
Exactly, when that, when we get consec, consistent temperatures above freezing, then we can open up all the plumbing out there, but without a heater or water heater. We, same with Wicks Park restroom while we're at it, uh, and Mount Bald Head, all three of those are without heat, so we're at the mercy of mother nature on that one.
Council, you have any questions for, for Scott?
Yeah, quick one, um, I think because of the pandemic, opening hours were nine AM last year, what are you, what are you thinking for this year?
Well, it really depends a lot of times on how much staffing we get, sometimes people, you know, in recent years, people haven't been. Compelled to work at the rates that we can offer for these lower paying jobs, seasonal maintenance positions, but if we get an adequate staff and. You know, and they have the time to do the detailed cleaning that is required, then. That, that's a good question, i- it isn't definitive yet, it's a little bit of a moving target, so I don't have an exact answer for that at this time.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Scott, using your, going back on your, uh, experience over the last year or so. Do you see that the area of the beach has, uh, been reduced quite a bit or is about where it was? What are we looking at in terms of, of, uh, the amount of space at the beach?
Pretty consistent with last year, I think the, I'm hoping the water level's gonna go down a little bit, it looks like it may be down still high. Compared to the normal, but, um, uh, it depends on the slope of the beach, so on this, if you think of the main section of the beach. The south part of that is a pretty steep incline, we didn't lose as much beach there, but on the north side of the beach. We've had to move, um, there's like that two, there's a, a massive sign for the, for the, uh, natural area up there, we had to move. Relocate that sign about seventy-five feet east twice over recent years, so we, we know it's about a hundred and fifty feet of. Beach width that we've lost on the north section of the main beach. And then on top of that, one thing that, because of the high volume of people out there, we have a, a. A big concern of mine is all the foot traffic up in the Sagatuck natural area, it's really wreaked some havoc on that dune system. Which is pretty fragile and it's exposed a lot of barbed wire fencing and we're constantly going out there and trying to. Pull as much of that stuff out as we can or cut it, um, we started getting a little overwhelmed with it last year, so then we took a different approach of trying to. Instead of cutting it, we were drawing attention to it a little bit more, so, cause there were just some sections that were unmanageable at the time, so. Maybe it was some, if the weather cooperates like this, maybe we can, the Public Works can spend some time going out there with, um, with some come-alongs or something and. And hook up to some big trees and try to, um, mechanically pull some of that barbed wire fencing out of those dunes.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
Questions for my, my colleague Scott and, and maybe Peter, Scott, maybe you just wanna update him with the signage that, that you're putting in, uh, so they're aware, if they get questions.
Sure, I was contacted by, uh, Deputy Rob Flockstra yesterday and he was pretty concerned that there's. There were some kids that were venturing out onto the shelf ice out at the Oval and the, I don't. The mother was up at the parking lot, so it was pretty concerning for him, that stuff's pretty dangerous and people don't realize that that stuff isn't like. Your average ice, it's got a lot of air and pores inside of it and holes can develop in it, so we got some, some sign. Custom signs ordered that we'd like to maybe put, uh, basically there, I wish I had an image of it in front of me, but, um. It just says danger, keep off shelf ice and we'd like to put two of those on the main section of the beach, two on the south parking lot. And then maybe one up by the, the ticket booth somewhere and just try our absolute best to keep people off of that stuff.
Thank you, Scott, and, and I know that people are concerned with sign pollution and, and too much, too many signs, but we, we, Scott thought it would. Be important to, to get some warnings out there, cause to his point, a lot of people don't understand what they're, what they're walking on, so I, I support. The signage, I don't know how the rest. I support the signage. I don't know how the rest of you feel. Okay, some thumbs up there. Okay, good. And then, uh, Mr. Dean had asked about merchandise. And, uh, Peter, I mean, is that something that, that we do year over year? I know that you, Aaron, and I have, have talked about it. And that's maybe something we can ramp up.
Yes, in the past, we have sold hoodies, sweatshirts, um, jogging pants, hats, different quality items, and we have done quite well with it. Last year with a guidance of Allen County Health Department, we stopped, we had a little bit, we sold it, it was leftover inventory, we got rid of because the heart, health department's kind of the rules and their suggestion was not to have a spot where you would have people mingling through clothes and stuff like that. We kept the items that we sold at the concession. Basically, as Scott had mentioned, just prepackaged, we cut down our menu quite a bit. And so basically, overall, the gross sales of the concession stand were about fifty percent off compared to the year, the season before. But overall, since we've been running the concession stand, I told the mayor that, you know, we've netted probably on an average year about thirty grand a year on that. And about gross sales of, the maximum was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars gross sales, except for last season. It's, it's been a moneymaker for the ci- city, but we're kinda handcuffed with the, what we can do out there because of the infrastructure that we have. So we can't change that. But I think it, we're, it's kind of a still wait and see, I believe, with the concession for this year to see what happens. The state's now, let Russians go to fifty percent and we'll just have, it's kinda wait and see where we'll be at sometime in May if this, if we, if we're back to a hundred percent and we can have items to sell um, that are not food related. But it's, it's been a good idea for the city and we've done it in the past.
Thank you, Peter.
Any questions for Peter relative to Oval Beach revenues? I know he included in our packet a, a, a graph of, uh, income or revenues, fiscal years. Uh, I, I think it's a little bit surprising uh, wh- what type of, uh, revenue source Oval Beach has, has become. Uh, are the, the figures you, you're presenting in your graph, Peter, that include, uh, concessions and merchandise, et cetera? Is that total, total receipts? Okay. Lost connection.
We've been having some issues at City Hall with our internet the last few days.
Okay, alright.
That or Peter's just being very still. It's hard to tell with him sometimes.
You're right, right. Well, any other comment from council for either Scott or Ryan? I know this is, I know Ryan has been in constant discussion with staff relating to, to Oval Beach and, and getting prepared for this. So, uh, I know there, we're, we're fortunate that we've got people who have been through this numerous times over the year.
Mayor, this is, yeah, Garnett. Just a real quick question for Scott. You said that the beach manner, manager position is posted, advertised? Is that on the city webpage?
It is, yes.
Okay, that, that's great to know. And then, uh, just the other thing, I, I think Peter left us, but, um, I did have a constituent ask us about the possibility of food trucks out at the beach. So, uh, thought I'd just put that out there. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just a, I guess a question about information. What happened in fiscal year fifteen and sixteen to make that great big peak of green? That's the park expansion. Not sure how to, how to translate.
I believe we have lost all of City Hall. I am grateful that I came home to run this meeting today. I wonder if that could be about when we redid the parking lot, maybe?
Okay, thank you.
But it's a solid guess, that's all.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ken.
I think I read in the, uh, in the detail here that that was the year that reflects the, uh, shopper doc? No, that wouldn't be.
Expenditures for the shopper, yeah, that's correct.
On there. I just didn't realize that it was that much.
Yeah. Right. Because green is actually expenditures. Right, right. And you can really see what, uh, last fiscal year did regarding, and, and, and that's driven by COVID and people not at work and wanting to get outside, et cetera.
Can I, uh, Mayor, I have a, I have a, a really sidebar question. Um, were we, do we sell, uh, T-shirts and sweatshirts out at Oval? Is that what we were talking about, merchandise?
Correct.
Okay, where does the, uh, graphics that we print on those shirts, where do, where do they originate?
You'd have, Peter would have to, you know, I think he's trying to come back in right now.
Cause I, I just, as, as an artist in an art, in an artist's town, I always have to advocate for my community. And I'm wondering if we couldn't have high school students or local artists submit designs, something to think about.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
This is Chris again.
Right.
When we get Peter back, actually the shopper's doc was eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. So, I'm not sure what's still, what the expense was from fifteen to sixteen, if we can get some idea of that. Thank you.
I see Peter's coming in on his cell phone, um, but he is muted.
Okay, so what was your question?
Okay, one question, Peter, is the spike in expenditures in fiscal year fifteen, sixteen on your graph?
Uh, that was the year we, um, redid the entire parking lot at Oval Beach. I think it was about four hundred thousand dollars. We ripped up the entire parking lot, all new asphalt, um, parking bumpers.
Great, thank you.
Yep. And the other question is, is your revenue graph, the revenues that you're quoting on that, does that include the concession stand and the, uh, sale of, uh, other items?
No, that does not include the sales at the concession stand. That's just basically parking sales.
Okay, alright. So I think that's good to know. Uh, any other questions relative to, to Oval Beach? Scott, does it kinda address some of your, your questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, um, if not, anything else, uh, and we can move on? Okay, well, thanks for the update. So next item, I guess, is, uh, last item is open board positions. I know, uh, Erin's been kinda heading up the, that, uh, her and I have been in, uh, communication or contact regarding it. Uh, you wanna make some comments, Erin?
Uh, yep, I can just say that we have two board positions open, one with Cal Lake Harbor Authority, which is Mark Klingle, his term has just expired. He is willing to serve again, and Mike Van Loon, the Chair of the Harbor Authority welcomes his reappointment. And then the other is Kathy Brockington, after a very, very, very long term with the Library Board, has resigned to pursue, pursue other things. And we have received two applicants for that so far. There is a new policy that went into effect not too long ago, a new resolution on how we are to manage open board positions. So per that policy, I have posted a notice in City Hall on the cork, on the cork board. And if you would like, I can also post it on our website and social media, but since we already had two candidates, that Ingrid Boyer, the Director of the Library, has said she's interested in interviewing both of them. Both of them are very avid supporters of the library. Um, she thinks either would be, uh, potentially a really good board member. I, it's up to the board if you would like to, um, have it advertised any further than simply City Hall. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try to wrap this up tomorrow and make a, uh, recommendation Monday. And the reason why, if we don't make our appointment Monday, then we'll, uh, have one less board member available for the March, March meeting for the Library Board. But if it can't be done, uh, I've had, you know, Ingrid at the library said that she doesn't anticipate any, uh, issues with a quorum. Uh, when you have a small board, that's one thing you're always concerned about, especially in the spring months, is that someone might be traveling or can't make a meeting. So, but she said she has, uh, she has no indication she would lack a quorum if Sagittuck only had one, uh, board member available for the meeting. But that's kind of an update on, uh, on, on my end. And, uh, any other questions regarding the appointments? Holly?
Uh, I'm, I'm happy if Ingrid is happy and, uh, I know Lou and I'm, I'm happy if that wants to serve. My question is, going forward, can we have a policy that we are listing our openings on the website and on our social media presence? I think it would be a good idea, maybe not in this particular case, but going forward that we, you know, try to reach as many citizens as possible when we have openings?
Currently, the policy leaves it to the council's discretion. The, I think that the language is that I must post it in City Hall and the council may direct me to advertise. I'm trying to remember where it was exactly.
And Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes.
I, I support that request from Holly. I think it's always good to, um, put it out there for folks. Certainly moving forward to get the Library Board covered. I think from a timing perspective, you can wrap it up like you want to. But I think going forward, it would be great to publicize it every.
Yes, there's, there's not a, not a problem with that. Um, oftentimes, it's, I, I don't wanna cast negative aspersions on the Library Board because it's certainly an important, critical position. We have a tendency to, to be more, uh, you know, on the zoning board of appeals or, or on planning commission, especially historic district, we seem to be wanting to reach out more to the community than, than on some of these other, uh, other boards. And, uh, they all deserve probably the, the same amount of, uh, exposure when we have an opening. Any other comments?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I will just share, Ingrid did say she was thrilled to pieces. She had two candidates and she thought it was extremely unlikely you would find anymore for the Library Board.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for that.
Just so I'm clear, did you want that, these posted to the website then and shared to social media or one or both, neither?
I think moving forward.
I think I'd prefer to move forward. We've got two excellent candidates to, to, that, that we'll have an opportunity to, to talk with. And, uh, well, we can, uh, you know, I think we can at least handle the Library Board. Typically in the past, unless there's been some objection from council, we've handled, uh, reappointments a little bit differently for boards. So, uh, but I'm open to, you know, comments on the Harbor Authority Board too, uh, you know. But other than that, you know, I guess we can have that discussion Monday, in Monday's meeting. So if there's no other
Oh, Mark?
Comments, yeah, Ken, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I'm looking at the, uh, the, the resolution that we passed, I guess it was last year. And it really needs to be cleaned up. Uh, one of the things wrong with it is that this enlists the Harbor Authority as one of the boards and commissions. And, um, and then that item B, I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't wanna advertise them on electronic or print media. So instead of saying maybe, you know, advertise, why don't we just say be posted and advertised on at City Hall Board and electronic or, and our print media. So I guess what I'm proposing is that we, we, uh, update this resolution.
Sure. I think that's something Ryan can work on with staff and present as a an updated version in the future. Just put it on the list, Ryan. That's a simple one.
Oh, that'd be easy.
Yeah, it's a simple one. Okay, any, any other comments, council? If none, we'll move to the second opportunity for the public to, uh, address the council. In this portion of public comment, the public can, uh, comment on any item, whether on the agenda, things we've discussed or anything else. So, uh, ask the public who wishes to comment to please identify themselves by name and community of residence. And, uh, keep your comments to three minutes, please. Uh, floor's open for comments from public. Does not appear that there's comments. Do you see anything, Erin?
Heard a ding. I don't know what that was, but no, I don't see anybody.
Know where that came from. Alright, uh, move on to, uh, comments by council. I'll just go around and ask, I guess, and if, uh, we'll go from there. Garnett, have anything further to add?
Nope, I'm good at this time, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Holly?
Oops, not at, not at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Scott?
I'm busy today, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Ken?
Um, yeah, just one. I was looking at the graphics for the social district, uh, items and they're quite attractive. I, I think they're very good. One of our retailers pointed out that, uh, the boundary sign, the last sentence on the boundary sign says, "Look for retail businesses that allow drinks while you shop." Since he, this particular retailer was not going to allow drinks, said that, are we directing business just to those who participate in the social district? I raise that as a common, uh, concern. The other thing was, um, I think we suggested last time that it might be good to have a, some kind of window sign or sticker that we could provide to, um, merchants who don't want to have their customers bring drinks into their stores. And I didn't see that. So, um, if it's possible, that might be something we can consider. Other than that, that's my comment.
Okay, alright. Um, I guess, I don't know if Cindy's on board or not, but maybe that's something Ryan can share with, with, with Cindy. Uh, Chris, comment?
Yes, just one. Um, I wanna thank the council for allowing the Christmas lights to stay up till, uh, St. Patrick's Day. Nick has called and said if it's alright as, as that date passes, he would like to start the process of taking them down. Springtime is very, very busy for them. And, um, I'm just gonna assume it's okay to tell him to go ahead if everybody kinda nods at me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright. Alright, I, uh, I did have a call from Lance Winchester. I believe he's president of Cow Hill Yacht Club. Regarding if the city had any idea whether we would be, uh, allowing, uh, Venetian festivals or the Chili Cookoff, which are two of their more, I think, uh, uh, biggest events that the, that Cow Hill puts on. I have no idea. I don't have a crystal ball. We don't know where we're at. I mean, if, uh, typically, and I can, Ken might have been able to add something more to this, the lead time that they need to get going on this. He says usually they wanna get going in April or May to pull everything together. And, uh, I mean, he wasn't pushing at all. He was just saying w- w- what my thoughts were, but, um.
Well, the, uh, Mark, the, um, uh, the mo, the most advanced work you have to do is permits and licenses. And, uh, they could decide to, to, uh, apply for permits. It's twenty-five bucks, uh, you know, for the liquor permit and a lot of work, yeah, but at least that would be in place. I personally wonder whether we're gonna be able to pack two thousand people inside a tent for a rock concert in July. You know, I just don't feel that the pandemic is gonna be tamped down by then. Could be, I don't know. Perhaps the, um, the Chili Cookoff is in mid-October and to me that, you know, has more of a possibility of happening.
Yeah, that's, uh, Lance was thinking along those same, same, same lines. I, I, I just pretty much deferred him to the city manager, uh, to see just how, how things are going. And also, I think your, your comments are helpful. I mean, they can at least do their permitting. He was concerned about ordering tents and all that stuff, but, you know, but at least the permitting, they can be a little proactive on it and they don't have a lot invested, uh, in, in, in that regards. uh, in, in that regards. Uh, he was saying that they are hopeful that even uh, that the chili kickoff could be done and even if they had to expand the venue a little bit to make more room. Uh, I told him I think the city would be more than happy to work with the group regarding expanding into uh, Wicks Park. Uh, maybe even going out in Closing Water Street like we used to do for the uh Taste of Sagittuck, that time of year. You know, that might be, maybe options. They're just ideas. They're nothing firm, that's for sure. But I just made said that I think the city would be open to working with them, especially about that time. It'd be nice to have some events come back to the community.
Yeah, it sure would. And uh, one, we had one proposal a few years back that we go into the Singerport Yacht Club parking lot. And uh, we thought that wouldn't be an ideal place, but for one year, it might be a good place to do it. There's a lot of room there. And if the weather's okay, you don't need sides on the tent. So I think that qualifies you for to be in a little different category with regard to COVID.
See what the, the limitations are headed, headed down the road. So if there's no other comment by council, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the workshop?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Garnett, seconded by Truster to adjourn the workshop. Would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Louis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Beckett?
Yes. Uh, thanks, everybody. Have a good evening. See you Monday night.